Father, we come to you this evening. We're so grateful that we have you as the sovereign God and our Lord and Savior. We ask God that you would bless this town, our community. Let each and every one of us know that you're here for us and you're here and answer our prayer. Lord, we have all experienced, Lord, a virus that is new to us, the COVID-19. And so many, Lord, has experienced it with great loss. And I'd like to mention Senator Shafan and Mr. Banner, their families, that you would heal them in this time of their sorrow. And I'm asking God that you would help us, give us the wisdom, you help us to do what you would have us to do. Let your will be done in the town of Lebanon. In Jesus' name we pray.
Praise allegiance to the cry of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any council member anything to add to the agenda at this time? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Sir, second?
I'll take my motion, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. All favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. We have received minutes from our December fourteenth Director of Council meeting. Hope everyone's had a chance to review those. Is there any editing or corrections that need to be made for those minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes for our December Council meeting as presented? I'm on it. Sir, second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. We have also received our accounts payable and capital asset purchases. Mr. Blackiship, are there any additions to the bills that we have been presenting? Mr. Gimmer, as Chair of the Finance Committee, anything that needs to be added?
No, sir, Mayor. I'll move to approve the December accounts payables presented.
Okay, if we have a motion, do we have a second?
Aye.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of paying the bills, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Okay, in our last meeting, we opened bids for an HVAC system at the, in our renovation of the theater. Mr. Blackiship and I think Mr. Steffy had met. And I need to ask, at this time, Mr. Blackiship, are you ready to recommend awarding a bid on the theater HVAC system?
Yeah, I feel very confident. I had a meeting with the contractor, Keith, and we went over proposals, the bids, both of the bids that was presented to us. And looking at everything, seems like the low bid that came in is the route that we would like to recommend.
And that was with who?
And that was with Starnt.
And Keith has looked at both of them as a contractor and feels comfortable as well as you?
Yes. Mayor, I'll make a motion to award that to the low bidder, Starnt, for the HVAC services for Russell Theater.
Which plan was that, one, two, or three?
The one that we were, that we were looking at, it is the sixty-seven thousand, which was the low, the low bid.
I'll say it in that moment.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Also, I think, Mr. Blackiship, we had discussions, I think maybe you were not feeling well the last meeting?
Yeah.
When we were talking about the awarding of bridge inspection proposals, are you at a point, are you ready to do that?
Uh, yes. We have, we would recommend the RSNH bid that was proposed. They've actually, you remember, they've actually already done one inspection for us. And we were very pleased with the report, the format, everything was very clear, easy to follow. And VDOC, of course, they work a lot with VDOC, so they have experience with VDOC for many years. Another plus is they are local here, they're out of Abingdon. So I would recommend, as far as my opinion, that that would be the group that I would go with. That we're looking at.
RSNH?
Yes.
And those inspections are covered under our VDOC state maintenance funds?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Okay. Counsel that has heard our town manager's recommendation regarding the bridge inspection proposals, what is your pleasure?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to award the bridge inspections to RHNS. And is that for a three-year term?
Yes, uh-huh, that's what we've been sent out the bill for.
For the three-year term on the proposal?
Three years.
I'll say it.
Mr. Gimmer's motion, Mr. Black is second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Members of council, I want to deviate from the agenda here just a little bit. We have Mr. Horace Christian with us tonight, one of our board supervisors members. Thank you, Horace, for being here. And we have Mr. Jess Powers, the Emergency Services Director. As you all know, since the flood, we've been providing data and been trying to get a claim filed for FEMA, not only for our local wastewater facility that experienced damage during the flood, as well as the assistance that was given to the town of Cleveland during that time. And my understanding at this point, Jess has the information that he needs to submit the application to FEMA. However, I'm going to turn this over to Horace, I'll let you speak first, Horace. In other words, where do we stand on the town of Lebanon's FEMA application?
I do quite understand.
Where do we stand on the town of Lebanon's FEMA application?
You may go ahead and go.
Aye, Jess. If you can come up. This is, this is a matter the council's asked about, so I'm glad you're here and maybe not, David, to give us some information.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Russell County Emergency Management is managing eight hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars of COVID and flood-related expenses. I have not received the approval from the coordinator, the Director of Emergency Management. I have not received direction to continue with the town of Lebanon's application from the Director of Emergency Management. And I have a backlog of five hundred and seventy-four hours before I can even get to the application for the town of Lebanon. I've prepared spreadsheets of what I've been working on, and it totals everything for the town. The town's claim is seventy-eight thousand dollars. It's on the last page. And I also wanted to show you in the emergency operations plan how my directions come. And my directions come from the Director of Emergency Management, which has not provided approval for me to continue with the town application. I've been to the board of supervisors for the last six months requesting assistance that is fully funded by FEMA and the CARES Act. They have not acted on that request. And I've also been limited on the amount of hours that I can work per week. My part-time budget was cut, five hours a week. And we're trying our best to get everything done, but we just don't have the time to do it. And I'm not granting any overtime. Even that will be covered under the CARES Act and FEMA grant applications. So I just wanted to give you an update on where the town stands on their application.
How long was, will it take to, how long, you, once you get the data, Jess, and you get the application done, how long does it take to submit that application?
It'll take seventy-eight hours, is what FEMA has estimated.
You said seventy-eight?
Seventy-eight, yes.
From one application?
Yes, it's about that thick.
Okay.
About ten inches thick.
Have you started any of it yet?
I haven't, I got approval to start yet.
Okay.
Is there anything that the town can do to help get approval for that?
I've asked that over the weekends of FEMA, and they've responded back. They could either help me get additional help, or the town can do it themselves. But it takes about forty hours of training to get the, get you approved to upload the information to the FEMA website.
Is it, I'm just curious, is it training online, Jess?
Some of it's online, some of it's by Zoom now.
Okay.
And that's something that recently came out last week.
Okay.
There is some Zoom training.
Okay.
Jess has Colonel Plateau, have they administered anything to FEMA before prior that you're aware of?
Colonel Plateau?
Yes.
Planting District, Jim Ballman?
Not that I'm aware of.
And who's the Director of Emergency Management?
Carl Ray. And Horace Christian is the Assistant Director of Emergency Management.
You're, now, you and I were talking, I can't remember if it was full-time or part-time. Do you have an assistant emergency, assistant emergency services staff member?
I have a deputy emergency management coordinator.
Yes.
But he's in quarantine.
Okay, how many, is he hourly too?
He's hourly, and he's also grant funded.
Are you salary or hourly?
I'm, I'm hourly.
You're hourly also?
And the reason is because if you're salary, you cannot build FEMA for any disaster-related expenses and overtime.
Okay, alright.
Because, you know, you don't know how long a disaster is going to last. And if you're not paid by the hour, you have no time accountability of the time it took to respond to the disaster.
Who is your deputy coordinator, Jess?
Levi Horton.
Horton?
Yes, he was a former town employee.
And just looking at this chain of command here, the liaison officer and the safety officer, do they have, where do they fall in between, between Mr. Ray, Mr. Christian, and yourself as far as helping with any of these?
I perform those duties as well.
So, okay.
The safety officer and the liaison?
Yes.
Okay.
Also do the fit testing for the U.S. agencies so that they can wear their N-95 math.
Right.
Or respirators.
Has the Director of Emergency Management prioritized the eligible projects or entities or agencies that's available for FEMA funding, Jess? Like, do we know where we're at, or?
No. Currently, I'm working, I worked sixty-five hours last week just on the COVID emergency. There was a number of people that could not access the vaccine portal. And I have an active portal that I actually can add people to to get their vaccinations scheduled. It's very time-consuming. Most of the people in this area don't have a email address or are not very computer savvy enough to get through the registration process.
At the VAM portal?
Yes, at the VAM portal.
Do, are you reality that I can send number of hours a week, Jess, this time? I guess they can only leave, since you're part-time, you can only work, assume so many hours a week, is that correct?
Well, I've been limited on the number of hours that I work.
That's what I mean?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Where does the, as far as coordination goes with the COVID-19 vaccine, Jess, where does the Health Department fall in? I mean, where's their responsibility here with coordinating that and taking some pressure off them?
The Health Department is the lead agency in this emergency, and I'm a support agency to the Health Department. And they are overwhelmed completely. They're, they're trying their best, they have a very small staff in Russell County, and they're, they're working as hard as they can. They're also doing vaccinations, contact tracing, they're helping with PPE. It's a huge task for a local Health Department.
One more question, Jess, just a follow-up on the, not to jump around, but with the application, with the FEMA process for the town, is there a timeline here that we have to get that application processed before we can be reimbursed for the funds that we've exercised throughout our general?
The timeline is two years from the date of the flood incident, which was February the seventh, twenty-twenty.
So we have till February of twenty-two?
Yes.
To, and then it's not out, we're not out after that, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Unless we qualify for an extension.
Sure.
But lack of manpower is not an excuse.
An excuse. Okay.
And I'm willing to do it, I just need the time. For example, today, I had over seventy-five calls about, to help the Health Department today. And we had a hazmat spill, I spent two and a half hours on a hazmat spill today.
Today, you had?
Yes. It was from, it's in between exit one and exit two, there, the gap, started there.
Okay.
Gasoline spill, sixty feet long. It went all the way down to exit two, down the ramp, turned left onto Pittston Road, down to Main Street, and to McDonald's.
Okay.
Sixty feet wide?
Sixty feet wide.
There's no location of where it come from?
No.
You mean it wasn't wrecked or anything?
No. We looked at the security cameras at the Shell station and at the McDonald's, but we couldn't determine which vehicle caused the incident. They had stopped in the Shell's parking lot, and then the Walmart cut through in the front of the driveway, and we could not see, their camera didn't show the front of their building. So we couldn't see who caused the hazmat spill, or determine who, what vehicle, but it stopped there. So when they realized that they had a spill at that point, they get out, they check it, they go to pull it in front of McDonald's, and they fix the problem, and then they leave. But that's as, that's as much information that we could gather from the incident.
Jess, I got a question. All the hours that you worked, you and Levi both, including overtime, can be reimbursed through FEMA?
Correct.
But again, you've been cut back?
It ca, not only is my hours and Levi's hours covered under the CARES Act, the overtime is covered under the FEMA COVID-19 Act. And also, the flood covers both administrative time and the overtime, plus it includes the benefits, plus an incentive rate for the county. So for every hour that I work administratively, the county will make fourteen dollars and ten cents an hour.
But you're not allowed to work, but you're not allowed to work those hours?
No, not yet.
Do you have any idea, Mr. Christian, when that might be released, that he can work those hours to help the community? Do I have any idea why?
When?
When or why?
Let me say this. The Director just tell him not to work any overtime, any line of overtime. And he said, they cut his time back to thirty-two hours, and that put him behind. Then they cut Levi, his Assistant Director, no, Assistant Director, Deputy Coordinator, cut him from twenty-eight hours to twenty-four hours. So that eliminated. And then, I think, he sent out an email on the twelfth of November asking to stop doing this overtime, this two hundred and seventy-one hours that will actually be, you know, reimbursed. And they're not replied. He sent them out December, November, but it, nor replied. I got on the phone with Lonzo on the eleventh of December, I was on my way to pound the flags. And I called him, I said, Lonzo, we, we need to get an okay, Jess, to do this. I said, you need to talk to Carl Ray. Actually, we don't, to my understanding, we don't supposed to be going through Lonzo, it's Carl and myself. Give him directions, okay, and authorization. Well, he, he called back later, I said, Lonzo, we've had one meeting, we need to have another. There too much misunderstanding and misinformation that Jess don't know what he's doing, I don't know what I'm doing, and I don't know who's calling this, but I said, we need to have another meeting. We had, what, we had a forty-five minute meeting before this. But anyway, that was, I think that was on the left, he sent out, I think, on the sixteenth, okay, part of that timeline. But since that's Lonzo, he's got to get it from Carl. And due to circumstances, he wants it in writing by email or something else because there's been too much back and forth. So, as of now, I talked to Carl Ray last night, I said, Carl, we need to get some information. We're the ones that town council meeting one night, they called, they're concerned about not being able to get the reimbursement for seventy-eight thousand dollars, a very expensive over flood. And he said, I'll try to get with you tomorrow. I says, it's the time of day, he got back with, I'm going to call him after this meeting. I said, don't, don't be way down in the evening, the fact is, we want to meet, we like to ask an information, try and get a meeting, again, Tom. But I don't know, he'll tell me, I'll have to think about it, one thing. He called me on Thursday, he said, I'll think about letting you know tomorrow. Friday pays, Saturday pays, Sunday pays, Monday pays. I called on Tuesday, still had to think about it. He tells Jess, I'll have to check with Lonzo, I'll have to check with Lonzo. And really, he's putting this department in jeopardy. I mean, Jess is willing to work overtime, but he ain't going to work for nothing. No, it was, he wants to have the okay to work. Now, all okaying to work two hours to get some mask and sanitizer, and sanitizer. But he want okaying to do this work for y'all and homemaker, y'all, PSA, Grant, and Cleveland. Always, Lonzo told me on the phone that day, he said, I want Jess to work on the PSA flood damage first. And I said, well, now, he gonna have to work on COVID, COVID-19, what, COVID-40?
The COVID Act of twenty-twenty, that was a period of performance from January first through September the fifteenth of twenty-twenty. I was ready September sixteenth to apply for that reimbursement because that only included overtime, and overtime that I used the county vehicle to respond to the emergency. But I didn't get the approval until December the eleventh. I had to go back and research over a thousand eighteen hundred invoices to see if there's anything that I could charge to that COVID-19 overtime from FEMA. But there was nothing, all the PPE that I get, Monday I fill out a report, and I describe how much PPE that we use a week, how much PPE that we need to be replaced by the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. And they provide it to us because there's some things that we cannot still get. We cannot get N-95 masks for the N-95 agency. And also, the Sheriff, the Police Department and Sheriff's Office too. You know, they need those N-95, so we can't get those off the market currently. So we depend on doing this PPE usage report every Monday. Tuesdays, I have to do a COVID report, how many number of cases we had. Since November, we have tripled our cases. Since November, we have doubled our deaths. And so, you know, we're trying our best to perform all the work that's, that's required, but we just don't, we're not given enough time to complete the task.
Well, I'll say, Jess and to Horace, thank you all for coming tonight. I appreciate this data here and explaining to the entire council what the process requires. At this time, any council member have any other questions for Jess or Horace?
I do have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
If I'm understanding this chain of command, this chart correctly, County Minister, is Mr. Lonzo correct?
I could say this in addition, what Dennis said, Jess, you know, the thing that is on it, Carl Ray responded that email in November, in the one, last of November, or before he added this mask fitting and restoration to, testing restoration for vaccine. He has some time, he, he has some time, we still need this overtime. This overtime is very crucial to get what he's been having to do, was work on his application. And I can't wrap my head around why Carl Ray, unless he's been advised otherwise, is not okaying this, go forth. Because, like he said, for any hour he works, the county's gonna give fourteen dollars and ten cents above what he is paying.
But the Director of Emergency Management is picked and can be removed at any point by the board supervisors, is that correct?
Yes, and he's got a four-year term, and I talked to someone, and someone's willing to move him and put me in that position. And, but then when they come, like, to see how things went, well, he's, he's going down here all the time, it's not a lot.
So did I hear this correctly, that the Director of Emergency Management cut the hours of the Emergency Management Coordinator during a pandemic?
And a flood emergency.
So did you hear that correctly?
Or not approving the, the amount of hours that's needed to do the job to a closing extent?
Actually, it's either or, Elijah, it's short, it's both. Am I correct?
You know, as a resident of the town, I'm committed to the town. I just live, I can walk to my house from here. And I want to see the town to be reimbursed for this money that they already have spent. And you, you gave a handshake out to Cleveland to help them during the flood, that cost you a lot of money.
It did.
So I want to get that reimbursed back to the town as well.
Horace, I have a, I have a question. And I know that, I understand there's a little bit of an issue here with, with the Director of Emergency Management, but to me, just thinking about it financial, you know, from the financial side, from the federal government, would it not be more efficient to hire another full-time position and be paying just, just a flat, a flat hourly rate versus paying another ton of?
If the Deputy Director, I mean Coordinator?
Well, just in general, just?
Well, we got, he got a part-time Deputy Coordinator. They wouldn't get rid of him and hire one full-time. But that guy has got nurse experience, two, plus two years of experience in his department, so we'd be losing that asset. So we talked about, and I thought we had voted to go forward with it, to hire another, that when Levi Horton is not available because he went to hospital, this guy can come in. He would be a great asset in the last couple, three weeks if we could have got that down on board. Or that person would remain on board.
But my, my question goes back to just, just a fiscal responsibility here. Even if the county didn't want to bring on a full-time position and have those extra benefits to have to pay a full-time position, could they not bring on two part-time positions?
That's what we're talking about, we, we switched from a part, a full-time to part-time because they would have to pay the benefits. We, we, we switched from a part, a full-time to part-time because they would have to pay the benefits with part-time. It's a win-win situation, him and I, and Lonzo talked for two hundred forty-five minutes. And we touched on that when we agreed on that. But, uh.
And for each hour that's billed toward FEMA or COVID, FEMA, I would imagine that the county would get another fourteen dollars and ten cents per hour?
Based on?
No matter if it's part-time and no matter how many people are doing the job, correct?
It's based on fifty-seven percent of the salary of the person that's doing the work.
So not just, so that fourteen-ten was fifty-seven percent, is that correct?
Yes.
Your, okay. Well, that's, I mean, that's still back to the fiscal side, it just makes sense to me. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, well, we, we want to have y'all, uh, Mr. Derry, that I had, you know, especially some because they weren't getting the reimbursement. I'm not saying. And we want to let all, uh, council members know, you know, uh, he could tell you. But then I feel like that whether we could make a, you know, he'd be more detailed, be able to make a better impression on him to know. Yes, he does understand, give you an explanation what the whole is. And I'm the moving, moving forward, you know, but you understand, as assistant director, I have never held him up in anything. And, and I've been on the road a few times. And I asked why, and I have nothing to answer yet.
Well, Jess, I feel like I can speak for the council of all. I appreciate everything you do. I know what long hours you give, not only to the county, but speaking for the county before the town also. You're always available, so we appreciate that. And hopefully, we can get this squared away, and we can give this community what it needs.
And we also thank you for coming and explaining everything to everyone here.
Uh, we also wanted to add to Mr. Leonard's question. Uh, I have been to the, the Board of Supervisors meeting. David Eaton did propose a full-time deputy coordinator, and it was voted on unanimously. And there was no action taken in filling that position. I would, uh, we, uh, Mr. Christian and I met with the county administrator. He told us to prepare a proposal for an additional part-time, uh, person. And we did that in December. I presented that to the Board of Supervisors in December. No action was taken at that time. They said they would take it up in the January meeting. I couldn't get on the agenda. I was allowed to come to public comment. And then, uh, no action was taken on the, uh, the second part-time.
They even cut his time. You go, they cut his time, three minutes, right?
Here, here's, and, and I'm not on the Board of Supervisors, and I'm not knocking anybody on the Board of Supervisors. But from a standpoint of five hundred and seventy-four hours of backlog duties that you need to perform, um, my only concern is, and my concern is for the town, I'm also a citizen of the county. But my concern here is, is I feel like it's my job as an elected official here in town to protect our general fund as much as possible, just like the rest of the council here. And when I look at, just looking at the numbers here, if, if the town of Lebanon, being in the Board of Supervisors positions, can hire two or three part-time people and make fifty-seven percent over top of what they're making? That's a, they're protecting the county's general fund, so, and, and we're cutting out these backlog hours. So that, I just want to make sure that I'm on the full understanding that that is the correct numbers.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I really appreciate you guys being here, but.
Yes, I have a couple more questions. Uh, in the latest stimulus bill, they did, one of the things that did not get compromised on is, is revenue for the localities and estates, uh, the towns and cities. However, they did allocate some funds for emergency management services. Is that correct? And, I mean, will we be eligible for any fund? I mean, will the county be eligible for any funds? Uh, or will they be getting any funds through the emergency, uh, management services?
There will be some availables for emergency management in support of the health department's.
Okay.
You know, there's.
It'll be one for testing and vaccinations?
Vaccinations.
Gotcha.
Testing and vaccination.
All right.
And, you know, Delilah is a emergency management coordinator for four counties, for the health department, Delilah and the town. And, you know, she's busy. I'm just trying to support her activities and what she needs.
Gotcha.
Uh, she called me on, uh, New Year's Eve and asked me, said, can you register these people? I don't have an open portal. And so I spent New Year's Eve uploading people into the portal, like I have for the towns, uh, police department, the EMS, and the fire department members. Because we want people to be vaccinated. It's another tool that we have to help protect us. It's not going to prevent, but it helps mitigate the, uh, symptoms of the COVID.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lonzo.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Jess. Thank you, Oris. Thank you for the opportunity. Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, if you, uh, could look at the manager's report, I just got, uh, a few items here, actually two. And, uh, the third one, I think I'll just include when we go in close session, personnel, Mayor and I have spoken. But there's two actions that I need tonight. Uh, they're both involving a downtown revitalization. Uh, we've had a meeting with Debbie Milton with Cumberland Plateau. And, uh, this is something that she needs for us to take care of whether or not that we want to move forward uh, with offering, uh, what's called the microloans. Uh, this is in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we've had this open for some time, and really not any businesses that are interested in. And when she told me that she had spoke with Kathy, uh, that, I think it's Kathy, is it Kathy or Karen? Kathy, Kathy, yeah. Uh, that we could actually use this money for other things. And first thing that come to my mind is we might could, uh, get permission to use this for the facade at the Russell Theater. Uh, so, uh, in my opinion, of course, it's up to you guys. This would be something that, uh, I would probably suggest that we, uh, did try to, uh, to go forward with and just try to use it for something else. It doesn't happen there, so go with the facade, but it could be used for something. And of course, that would have to go through its approval and so forth, that we could use this money for something else.
I kind of like, I like your recommendation regarding the facade, because that's a separate project plan staying altogether.
Yes, right, right.
It's a tight cut.
And, and with, honestly, with the microl, microloan program, we have some other entity and agencies like the IDA where we've got USDA loans and so forth that are available that are even at a better interest rate and a little bit less rent hate. As far as for our small businesses, uh, you know, funds available to us, yes, and of course, we were able to do the grants. The county was able to do the grants. So I would support Kevin working with Debbie in, in whatever paperwork they need. You know, I think we should authorize Kevin to do whatever he needs to do to either put that, uh, budget revision and put that into facade or streetscape. Obviously facade. Uh, uh, we are going to be in a shortfall for the theater, uh, as far as, I think we have some budgeted money, but obviously, it's not enough to cover, uh, you know, what our cost estimates would want to be for the marquee and the facade are there. So I would definitely support, uh, moving forward with Kevin working with Debbie and doing a budget revision and getting that put into the facade program. Or streetscape, if the HCD want to prove it for the theater, put it in a different element of our project. Yes.
Kevin, do you need action on this?
I do.
What do you, what action do you need?
I just need a motion, and, you know, that's pretty much it.
A motion of what?
Uh, for us to not do the, the microloan and actually use this money, uh, for something else, for facade.
Is that your motion, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, my motion is to dissolve or eliminate the microloans element of the downtown revitalization project and work with the, uh, our administrator, uh, the Commonwealth Plateau Planning District in getting that, uh, funds put to a different element of our downtown revitalization project.
So second? Any further discussion? All favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay?
The other item I'd like to talk about is, uh, is the program income plan. And this is actually in your packet, if you'd like to take a look at it. Uh, it's behind the information tab. And it's just like two, three pages. And this is more or less just, uh, actually four pages. Uh, this is just a formality that has to be done. Uh, this is something that has to be in place, uh, that it's a requirement, uh, for us to have that if we was to obtain any revenues, uh, in our downtown revitalization, we have to have a, uh, program income plan that is set in place to where that we know how we're going to handle the money. Uh, but obviously, uh, you know, we, we don't foresee actually having any revenues, uh, whatever money that might be available, we're going to use it, uh, toward the project of the downtown revitalization. Uh, so I don't really look for us actually using this. However, this is just a requirement, uh, that you have to have something in place just in case that, that was to happen. And this is, what this was actually provided to me, uh, from Debbie.
So you need approval on this?
I need your approval on this, too. Yes.
Let's council's pleasure.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the Virginia Community Development Lock Program Income Plan as presented. And offer us, Mayor, to sign, and, and the county to decide on it, it's three dollars. I'll make that certain, Mayor.
Motion is accepted. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Both say aye. Okay, thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome, Mayor.
Uh, Chief, this is, do you have, uh, are you ready for your report?
Yes, sir. And I'll, I'll be very brief, Mayor. Just to give you the, the quick numbers on it, sir, we, uh, responded to a total of three hundred and seventy-one total calls for service, uh, for the month of December. We had patrolled a total of eight thousand eighty-three miles, assisted twenty-seven motorists. Total of twenty-two arrests were made, and a total of forty-six summonses were issued and responded to eight motor vehicle crashes. We had a total of thirty-four new cases come in, twenty-eight of which were cleared either by arrest or unfounded, which left us with only two active cases for the month. Uh, our DTF was, the DTF program, uh, was successful with, uh, four purchases. Uh, had some other attempts and, uh, participated in some trainings and also helped us on the road to alleviate some, uh, overtime. Uh, our C-TAC program, Chris Need, he, uh, the C-TAC department took in five total cases for the month and also was able to use Chris Need on a, a few days, uh, December twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth to help out on the road to cut down some overtime for some COVID issues. Uh, we didn't have to bring in some officers to help us on that, to help with some of that. Um, other than that, just something I'd say is, uh, the Shop With The Cop program, we, we did, we were able to do that, and it went off very well. We were able to bring in, uh, twenty children and spend close to two hundred and fifty dollars on each child. And if, I think it went really well, I think it helped a lot of families. So I appreciate you guys letting us do that, and I appreciate the ones that, that helped on that. Uh, the money from, and this, uh, was actually last month of where I missed, uh, the meeting with you guys. The USDA money on the one vehicle has been brought down and deposited, so we have that money on that. The two vehicles, um, were dropped off this morning to get up fitted with lights, should be back. Uh, they told us, they gave me an estimate of Wednesday, of, of next week. We should have both vehicles on the road operational, uh, ready to go. Um, uh, other than that, uh, everything's, is going pretty good. Route seems to be good with the department, everything's going good.
Chief, I do want to commend you and all the police, all of our staff for the Christmas program for these young people. And we certainly, and those folks who also donated, I see we had several folks to donate that.
Yes, sir.
Some assistance in the community. And hopefully, we will continue to do that. Is, is our department, are we good COVID now among all our employees in the police department?
Yes, sir, we, uh, Nikki, uh, Sergeant Boss, she returned today off of her quarantine. So we're, right now, we're good.
Okay.
Officer Jackson did complete the entrance exam to the academy, and he, today was his first day. So he is, he is now full-time.
In the academy?
Yeah.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the chief at this time? We'll leave you to hang with us a little before we sort of leave later on.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We'll have the fire department report. It's, this makes for a town's afternoon heading, I just want it to, I mean, it says it's in here, but I can't find it. I mean.
Is it usually the, the one within the?
For reason, we didn't have it and have not been getting it. Okay, I'm sorry, I've heard before, and I mean, I don't know, so I'm thinking, maybe I will, yes, it's.
Is the report generally just includes the number of calls and who responds?
Yes.
But Lyson said he did not get it, and she did not get it, he said.
Okay, I'll take care of that. Would you like for me to back up and send those also?
I think it went back to November, maybe, I'm not sure.
Can you text me tomorrow and just let me know when to back up to?
We, we've not got the last two, so we.
December?
December and January.
In January, okay.
Okay. Is there any way, before we move on there, is there? I mean, I know that the Fire Department's volunteer, Brad, but is there any way to possibly designate a point of contact in the fire department itself to make sure that it's taken care of?
Yeah, that's no problem.
I mean, can you, can you follow up with the assistant chief and chief, just to?
Well, I handle all the invoicing for the department. And I'm in contact with Beverly, uh, J L, so.
You'll be our contact?
That can be, I can, I can carry that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Brad. Uh, we're down to our town attorney report. Mr. Taylor?
Uh, I'll discuss mine in the close session.
Close session. Any committee reports this evening?
Yes, sir, Streets Committee, I have a report, sir.
Okay.
If you don't mind, and your recommendations. Uh, this past week, we had a, uh, we had a Streets Committee meeting itself. Uh, Councilman Gilmer, Councilman Fields, Mr. Mr. Blankenship, and, uh, Ms. Beverly Stansum. There's a couple of things that I, that I would like to give direction, you know, that the council moved toward for Kevin and the Streets Department. Uh, one thing is, is, is we're going to now focus our goals from the town streets that we've done the first half of the year. We're going to move toward focusing all of our attention on the state streets. Uh, with that being said, uh, the annual budget for the, uh, for the Vida Urban Maintenance and Construction Program is nine hundred and forty-four thousand, four sixty-four annually. At this point, we have utilized, uh, actually, we have a balance of eight hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars left. But as I said, first six months of the year, we've focused on town streets and, and side streets. Uh, the next six months of the year, I'd like to give Mr. Blankenship direction for Mr. Hughes and, and Mr. Mead to move, to move the focus to the state streets. Uh, with that being said, I'd also like to give direction that we, uh, we dedicate at least, at least three employees from the State Street Department to concentrate on state street building. Uh, that'll be inspection oriented. Uh, we need all of our state streets inspected, we need all of our curbs inspected, all of our sidewalks inspected, crosswalks, et cetera. Uh, I would like to see, and I, and I, this is going to be an administrative, uh, issue here. I think we need to reconcile all the invoices for maximum reimbursement of our general fund. I feel like it's our, I feel like it's a real goal of ours as a council to make sure we protect our general fund. And I'd like to, uh, we have a couple of employees currently, uh, that, that'll give the recommendation. Mr. Shane Farmer, we, we currently have the, uh, the rec center closed down. And I think he could be a real asset, uh, to help go back through and reconcile these invoices with Ms. Beverly and Kevin and Billy. Uh, the next thing, uh, is chain of command. I think we need to set up a standard operating procedure, uh, for state streets uh, to ensure that we don't, in the future, have to go back and reconcile and make sure that we're picking up all the pieces that may be left behind. Uh, so we need a, with Kevin's direction, I think we need to set a personal contact in the Streets Department uh, that will take care of all states. in the Streets Department uh that will take care of all state street work orders, turn those into the Public Works Director, Billy Hughes, and then Billy assess those and then turn those in for input into our management system. I think accountability for this process for state streets is a necessity and it's necessary. Uh, the state streets, it's a fifteen percent of our annual budget and I feel like with that being fifteen percent of our annual budget, we can get really efficient here and what we can do in turn is protect our general fund by properly billing and allocating funds from the VDOT Urban Maintenance Program uh to protect our town and its citizens' accounts. Uh, there's a couple of things here that we, that uh, you know, Scott and Kevin and Mr. Fields, we, we looked at, uh, some projects moving forward. Uh, we've got a wall out here at Wendy's that we really need to give attention to. Um, we have some lamp, you know, the landscaping, the mowing, uh, the weed eating, uh, any of the landscape watering of the, of the, any flowers or any type of uh pompous grass that we have, uh, the watering of the flowers hanging on the light poles. Bridge maintenance, I think bridge maintenance, we need to make sure that we are, we've done a bridge restoration. We need to make sure that bridge restoration project gets backed up, reconciled, and built back towards the proper entity here, which is the VDOT program. Any flood damage uh that we've had in the past six months as far as putting out cones, uh, any type of traffic control, we need to make sure that we back up and encompass what we've done so far. Even though we've been focusing on town streets, we need to make sure that we are backing up and grabbing everything for state streets to build appropriately. Uh, one thing that'll do is, 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 just like I said, we've not used, we've not used very much of those funds the first six months, but dedicating these three employees, at least three employees to state streets, uh, those salaries and wages, we're going to be able to, we're going to be able to uh save our general fund and that's a, that's a real asset for us to do. And if you have any questions, any council member or the town manager, I'd be glad to answer those as best as possible.
I agree.
I'd like to thank our Street Committee for your all's meeting and listening, but I, I agree that we need to utilize our urban maintenance funds to a degree that can assist us with our general fund. Uh, uh, seems like annually we get to the springtime and with those funds being in July or June thirty, we find ourselves trying to spend money, which typically is up being paving, quite a bit of paving. Uh, I know there's been discussion, I, as we move forward, I hope we will look at, in lieu of paving, if we've taken care of our personnel costs, if we have the possibility to do any sidewalk projects anywhere. You know, if you remember, we discussed beginning the process of sidewalk in the Technology Development Center, uh, entering there, up where Norfolk Drum is and CGI, a lot of folks walked that. Uh, but whatever we can do, and I would, and I'm sure Kevin, because you've worked with VDOT for years, uh, I don't know who the rest of the engineer is, but they normally come do a, uh, lives, they usually come through with Kevin and Billy and will do a drive-through and they'll actually earmark sites that we have to correct on roads. Uh, and if we can utilize that and uh still have, because we never want to give money back at the state just.
Right.
And you know, we, Scott remembers, we went through a couple of years there, we found ourselves trying to do carryover like back-to-back and JR, I think, got to the point that he probably wasn't, wasn't going to let us move forward, continue doing that. Is that correct, Kevin? So.
Mayor, can I, I was in that meeting, can I make a couple of comments?
Sure.
With the Street uh Committee meeting. Uh, I'm with Elijah completely that after looking at the two budgets, uh, and Diane probably don't want to hear this, is that we do need to reconcile all the town, the town streets budget and everything that possibly could be put over into VDOT or state streets needs to be put over. For example, there's a project at Twin Circle Drive where we had uh drainage issues and we, you know, we did a lot of work down there. That was put all on town streets. That needs to be put back on uh state streets. Uh, and to give you an idea, we have right now in state streets still budgeted over five hundred thousand dollars for, till July first to utilize for sidewalks and paving, that's half a million dollars. And we have our, um, our Department Head of Public Works saying, I have very little to pave this year, uh, that needs it. It doesn't mean that, you know, he can't find some spots. Kevin is going to be working with VDOT to check to see where, they have an index to use to see what they see that we need paved and Kevin is going to get with VDOT and kind of get us a list from them on, on what they perceive is, needs to be paved or needs immediate attention. So I'm for retrospectively, unfortunately, going back and reconcile that. Not just that, but the, the uh, the uh, the VDOT rates, if we wasn't billing those today, those need to be updated retrospectively. Uh, vendor invoices needs to be looked at. Anything from Nicholson, anybody that has done state street work for us, we need to look at those invoices to make sure that that bridge work, for example, Ken's construction work on the bridge was not, was put on town streets and not state streets. So we need to look at invoices, we need to look at vendors, and that's what unfortunately takes some work. And I support using chain or whatever needs Kevin, you know, administratively needs uh to support that, but there's also going to be a little bit of legwork in the uh, the logs that the employees do daily. Those need to be revisited as well, unfortunately, and Ki, and Billy and Kevin will need to sew that up to make sure that all those labor hours that needed to be on town streets is put on town streets. Uh, I do support moving some employees over and Billy Davis recommended, the three uh employees that he recommended put it on uh state streets for the remainder of the fiscal year. That's not saying that Billy can't pull them and put them where he needs them if we have an emergency and we have something else going on. I would also suggest leaving Hunter Music on there. I think Hunter Music is only one designated now, so that'll be a total of four employees. But we need to put priority on the second, uh, Kevin, even with our other employees, we need to put a priority on state streets second half of the year. Any bridge inspections that can maybe be moved up in this fiscal, uh, you know, Billy had put on there Wendy's, Ponce Drive, uh, Sando Avenue, work that he recommended get done, if that's covered under VDOT funds, we need to move forward with it.
Yeah.
Um, we need to consider doing an activity along for our shop also immediately. We just, after reviewing the Urban Maintenance Program, we identified that some of the shop work is available for state funds, so some of the guys, some of the work that Danny and Scott heard of knowing is eligible for VDOT reimbursement. Uh.
The rate, the rate for our equipment has went up too.
What's that?
The rate for what we can charge.
Kevin's got the updated VDOT rates now.
Our equipment has went up too.
What's that?
The rate on our equipment has went up.
I'm sure it goes up every year, doesn't it? Kevin will do. They revise that every year on an annual basis.
So, but you have all those figures and have a charge?
Yes, yes. We've got the new rates and, uh, yeah.
And that's what Scott was mentioning, you, you finished that?
Yeah.
But that's what Scott was mentioning as far as retroactive, backing up and, and plugging those new rates in as of July one moving forward. A couple of things that we did discuss, uh, instead of us, instead of our employees giving one log of, of work orders with town streets and state streets on one log, um, I would like for Kevin to give it Diane and Beverly and actually build two logs, have a, a town street work order and have a state street work order. That way, there's no confusion when we're putting in our management system. Also, uh, just being fiscally responsible and, and doing the right thing with our funds here. I'm not a fan of digging up good asphalt and laying brand-new asphalt, as you mentioned earlier, Mayor, so there's a project, uh, and Kevin can elaborate a little bit on this, uh, just off of Donald Seymour, um, they're off Pioneer Drive, up above Donald Seymour Lane, there's, I think there's roughly seven to eight homes that have been built on that upper road. Uh, and I asked Kevin to, to get in touch with VDOT and uh possibly have a, you know, them come down and have a meeting and look at that and see what type of project that would be for the town to actually construct that road uh to VDOT specs, that way we can put it into our inventory. Now, with that being said, we can't use VDOT funds for that type of construction because it's not a town spec, but what we can do is if we do a capital outlet project or if the town wants to fund it themselves or get a bond, we can allocate that payment for that construction program out of our VDOT funds. You just can't use the funds to build it. So that would be my direction for Kevin, you can follow up on that, Kevin.
Okay. Anything else at this time? All right. We'll move down to uh.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I've got a couple of things in our finance, I thought you meant.
Oh, yeah.
Here's our streets, I'm sorry.
Finance, go ahead.
Uh, we have three CDs, I believe, that matured in February, uh, so we'll need to uh discuss or plan on meeting or we can put it to the next meeting, but we'll have to notify First Bank and Trust on what we want to do with those CDs. They automatically renew. I would like to have Kevin instruct Beverly not to let them automatically renew. Uh, we may need to look at terms and rates in them like we did uh prior in a finance meeting or at our uh regular monthly February meeting, Mayor, where we decide that we want to put those into, you know, CDs, check out the rates for First Bank and Trust, uh, and the term, of course. I think right now they were, they were all in there for eighteen months, I, I believe, and that matures in February.
Do we not bring in that February?
I do not.
Those, I mean, we probably don't need to wait till our February council meeting, that's two weeks in.
Well, I think we can notify the bank that we're not going to.
Automatically renew?
Automatically renew and uh I think those will roll over into our savings account, which is, um, you know, it gets some interest. So we really wouldn't be out of too much money there, Mayor, of interest, even as long as we notify we're not renewing until we get, uh, until we see what the, the council decides to do.
Well, there's a, there's a chance that we're going to have to adjourn and reconvene this month, Mr. Gilmer.
Okay.
For the purposes of filling the position.
Right.
With interviews.
Yeah, that may be a good time.
Maybe we need to try to get some info and be ready, just add that to our agenda at the continuing meeting.
Sure.
Okay, what else you need?
Uh, we have our four uh bond payments due uh for our Polycap Industry, Steel Fab Industry, our water and sewer project uh with the duty tank, and also the recreational center. The, all four bond payments, uh, the first payments are due in February and Beverly asked me for instruction today and I just want to clarify that we do want to eliminate the escrow account and pay off the uh, or uh, make the, you know, towards the first bond payment. I think that was approximately, bond payment was approximately seventy-five thousand dollars and we had sixty-some thousand remaining in escrow, so that will be a small amount coming out of the general fund.
To use for this bond payment?
Right, to make the, finish off that bond payment. Of course, we have Polycap, uh, we have, uh, already have those funds uh in an LGIP account to make that payment, the same with Steel Fab, and then we'll be making a uh small payment to the, uh, I think around thirty-five thousand dollars or so bond payment for the water and sewer uh bond that we have also in February.
Uh, you want to make a motion to close the escrow account and apply it toward the bond?
Yes, I'll make that in form of a motion, Mayor.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Make a motion.
I think you already did.
Did, okay.
The other last meeting.
Okay.
Fantastic.
I'll do it again, Mayor.
Do we do it, do we apply it toward the bond payment?
You just made to uh.
You paid a lot of bills over there.
Yeah, you just made it to, to take the remaining balance and for the bond payment.
Okay.
I'll get it.
All right, good, thank you, Bill.
Um, one more thing on a financial note is Kevin, I would ask that you uh sew up with, in your department meetings, that even though we're in the new fiscal year, we've exhausted our COVID funds, we still need to track those funds in each department, whether it's quarantine, you know, the uh Chief Desmond just mentioned that uh one of his officers or sergeant just come off quarantine. All that needs to be kept up with, there's a chance with uh new stimulus coming out possibly with this new administration, that there will be uh stimulus funds come out. We don't know what those look like yet, we may be able to back up uh to help support uh some of the expenses uh that we had uh indirect, uh, you know, consequence of the COVID nineteen vaccination. So moving forward, whether it's PPE, quarantining, whatever it may be, we need to still keep along with those costs and uh moving forward because we don't know what that's going to look like.
It'll make it a lot easier, we've already created, our criticism has to do with it.
Right.
And the next time, if those funds do become available, we'll make it a lot easier on, on Kevin, Diane, and Beverly.
Okay. Mayor, that's all I have on the finance.
Any other committee reports? Okay. Uh, I put these two items under other business, but Scott and Paul will put you in a hot seat because of your promises. My question, here's my concern, if you all remember last year, I don't know how many times we would schedule an event and then we'd have to postpone it due COVID. We'd reschedule it, postpone it, and I'm sure we all saw different comments related to that on social media. My concern is, is if we go forward, which we're, we're starting, uh, the first event that we have is the Cedar Fest, which is the middle of June. We've got July fourth, we have the beach party in the middle of August, we haven't really set the date for the townwide yard sale again. I guess my concern, Scott, I keep hearing this talk about herd immunity and uh if possible, do you think we're okay for Cedar Fest in the middle of late, uh, middle of June? Or do we need to see if it's possible to reschedule, which that will be a nightmare, but I'd rather do it now, you understand where I'm coming from? I'd rather do it now than have to do it two or three schedules and just say, no, we can't do it, we're going to cancel it again.
Well, Tony, I'll just comment on what some of the national health, uh, you know, representatives or specialists or experts are saying, Jeff may be able to elaborate on this, but everything, you know, everybody talks about getting back to normalcy. And, you know, after this surge of Thanksgiving with Christmas with the slow vaccination rollout, um, and even the challenges, the logistic challenges, I don't want to see slow rollout, there's just a lot of different challenges that we've had uh that's resulted in, in things not going, you know, not meeting their na, their goal initially of, uh, you know, twenty million Americans immunized by, um, uh, you know, by the end of the year. Uh, you know, they're saying now it's going to be fall at the earliest before things get back to normal, so you don't really, so I don't really know, can't get a feel of when that's going to be. But I do know when Shane sent me that flyer for me to view, the initial thought that come in my mind was, man, I don't know about this. I mean, it's an outdoor, I mean, the one thing is, it is an outdoor event, um, but, you know, I would want to get, I mean, I would want to get guidance from our local health officials on it and see what they say, to be honest with you. I mean, I don't know how, it's so hard to look out, um.
Who do we go to?
You know, to look out.
Is that the Health Department?
Well.
Just, I mean, who do you?
That's, that's where I'd start, but I mean, it's, you know, my question to you, Tony, is are we, uh, uh, you know, at what point can we back out? And when do we need to make a decision? Is it by next month? Uh, is it by March?
Yes.
I mean, I know you don't want to shift back and forth, but.
Well, let me just tell you what, if you remember, what they agreed to, all the musical acts for last Cedar Fest agreed to continue the existing contract at the current rate for one year, okay?
Right.
Obviously, my concern, if we go now and say, hey, guys? Obviously, my concern, if we go now and say, hey, guys, I mean, I'd rather do it now and say, I don't, I don't think we're going to be able, can we reschedule you all into the fall?
Yeah.
And see if they're available, and maybe that's the cleanest way to do it. I don't, that's why I'm trying to get input, I don't want, I mean, if, if in fact, if in fact it's unrealistic to think we can have the Cedar Fest in the middle of June, then I think we need to move forward and looking at other plans, is what I'm asking from the council.
I don't think it's going to hurt us moving it to early fall. I mean, I think that we don't know what the next couple of months are going to look like as far as getting the vaccine now, the second day of the fall, and how fast that's actually going to happen, and then, you know, what's going to happen in the summer. I, I do think that we have a better shot in the early fall. I mean, that's just my.
Well, that's what I'm asking, what do you think, Bill?
I, I play, I'm very sure I have any follow.
Red?
I agree.
Mr., Deanna?
I agree.
Deanna, Lads?
Yes, I, I agree 100%, and we just don't know what to expect, and Jess, and, I mean, if you want to elaborate.
Mayor, I just want to elaborate too, there is a couple of new variants to the virus.
Yes.
And we don't know if a vaccine will work on that variant or not.
That's right.
So that's another concern to look at. This thing has been change after change after change, and so, you know, you have to look what's best for the, for town.
That's what, that's right, that's what we're looking at. Do I, is it agreeable with council, I believe, to have that conversation, Kent, because he did, he's the one that scheduled all of these? Am I good with council to have that discussion with him and move forward and see what options we do have? The other one is Cedar, uh, the.
Beach party.
Beach party. It's like the 14th of August. Well, originally, herd August was a good herd immunity month. I don't know what to. I mean, I, I think I may just ask, see, the thing about the beach party is you can't really move it to the fall. It's a summertime event. I mean, it was probably one of the biggest events we had over here during our vice tenure. But is August 19th out of the, out of the window of possibility? I hate to keep looking at you.
Well, I'm just going to say my thoughts. With the unpredictability, with, with the, with the revenues and stuff still that we're having, I would consider having one or the other, not maybe both in August.
Okay.
That, I mean, that's just one councilman's suggestion because it's, you know, there's a, and there's a lot of work that goes on with it, and we're still, I mean, it's just hard to get my head around it right now with, with everything going on and still trying to mitigate COVID. Three days ago nationally, we hit, you know, over 300 cases, and so I just, just seems like maybe, you know, one or the other might be an option. But I don't know, I don't know what the, what the contract says if we're, you know, obligated still to, you know, we've already made deposits on both bands, but I'm open for you to find out, Mayor, as much information as you can and, and be open to whatever changes that, you know, that, you know, that you suggest as far as the event schedule.
Let me find out all that information, and hopefully I'll have it within the next two weeks. And I can bring that and add that to our continued meeting. I found, the item B is the reopening of the Town Hall and the Community Center. I found Diane Cottis, the answer to that question is pretty clear, under the governor's order. It's over on the last page of the document. The executive order, current executive order without limitations, ends at 11:59 January 31st. So, Mr. Keller, right now, it would appear to me, according to the governor's order, that we continue our community center operations and Town Hall until January 31st. Is that safe?
Yes.
Under the, under the governor's order?
Yes.
That's all I have on that.
I would like to add something to that, Mayor.
You'd like to do one more?
I'd add something to that governor's order. If we're going to keep the Town Hall closed, I know this is going back to the street side, but if we're going to be doing a major reconciliation, I think, I'll let Kevin make that decision, but I think Wanda inside the Town Hall who's putting in those work orders, I think we could utilize her labor hours to a greater extent since we already have two employees up there, so I'll let him make that call.
We'll work it with Kevin. Sounds good.
That'd be fine.
Okay. Let's see. We're now down, I need a motion to go into executive session.
Do we need to discuss this bingo thing?
What's that then?
It's a, there was a donation for a purse during bingo. The Punch Valley Community Family Crisis Services, it was in the back of the pamphlet.
Consider information.
Do you want me to read it, Mayor?
Yeah, just go ahead and read it.
Dear friends, Punch Valley Community Action Incorporated, Family Crisis Services is sponsoring our second annual designer purse bingo on February 19th, 2021 at the Russell County Conference Center in Lebanon, Virginia. This is a charity event, proceeds support our operational and programmatic costs, which includes services and survivors of sexual and intimate partner violence. This event will follow health and safety guidelines from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention as well as executive orders in Virginia. We will reschedule the event if necessary or host a virtual format to comply with the guidelines. Punch Valley Community Action Incorporated, CBCA, is a private nonprofit and since 1965, we have provided services to individuals and families in Tazza County. Family Crisis Services, one of 10 CBCA programs, has been the leading voice for sexual and intimate partner violence in our community for over 30 years. In 1997, we expanded to Russell County and began providing services to survivors of sexual violence. We know that you are committed to eliminating sexual and intimate partner violence and that you are, that you value happy, healthy, and safe relationships. The donation of $100 is an opportunity for you to support our organization and work with us to create change in our community. This donation will sponsor one of the 20 purses for our bingo. Your sponsorship will be listed on our social media, in our promotional materials, and at the event. Please submit your donation by Friday, January 15th. Donations can be sent to the address listed below. If you have any questions, please contact our Russell County office at 276-889-8206. Thank you for making our designer bingo purse bingo a success. Sincerely, Jennifer R. Born, Director.
Where are we standing on our donations this year? It seemed like to me we had, due to COVID, we reduced a lot of our donations this year. Have we, is this the first annual, is that, am I reading that right?
Second annual.
Did we donate to it last year? Did you manage that? Donald Cobb. Do you know, Diane?
I'm not for sure.
Red, you know anything about this organization?
I do not, Mayor. The only thing that bothers me is, you know, what we weren't able to give to our employees due to lack of funding, and, you know, if we can't give to our employees, I just hate to double me up.
How about, we just said that?
Yeah.
We'll not take any action. That's it. They're good? Yes, Cobb?
I'm good with no action, Mayor.
Deanna?
Um, no.
Bill? Mayor? Lads?
I agree.
I'm ready.
He is no action.
Can anything else to take that before we go into closed session? Can you hear me now, entertain a motion to go into closed session? Section 2.2-3711A for personnel recommendations from Town Manager. Legal, Kevin, anything, has that covers?
It covers, it covers me, I don't know what else you, you know, y'all may want to say.
I believe those are the two, only two items.
Financial, please.
For the reasons of, uh, town, town spending, I'd like to discuss what we're spending on funeral cost again.
Personnel?
You can do it under personnel.
Okay.
You can do it under personnel. Go ahead and add motion. Tom, is there a second? Any further discussion? All the favors say aye? Post say a second?